I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up, approval of the agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the agenda from eight twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Second, good move in second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes, opposed say no, agenda is approved. Next is public hearing.
Can you speak up, please?
Can you hear?
My heart's hurting.
Do you hear back there?
Better?
Yeah. So first is the public hearing on fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and Scott.
Sure, I will go through at a decent pace, a PowerPoint presentation that has been modified a little bit, but we used this last week during the city council budget work session. So this is our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, starts July first and goes through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And I'm just going to hit some of the highlights, the general fund, which in essence is the administration, cemetery clerk, parks and police departments, among others. The difference between revenues and expenditures is a one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar net decrease. We currently have a fund balance of over a million dollars, and we'll go all through it, we'll end up with a fund balance of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, which just puts us slightly below our target fund balance. Some of the highlights, we budgeted for three council members to go to the MML convention on Mackinac Island, that's always a very popular one, don't really know why, fireworks contribution of five thousand dollars, we have the senior millage in there of fifteen four, but we have yet to determine where those appropriations will go. We're looking at cleaning the air ducts in city hall, it's been at least twenty years, if not twenty-five to thirty before they've, since they've been cleaned. MERS retirement funding, we are adding additional funding so that we get close to do a hundred percent of our funding of our Michigan employees retirement system pension. This year, there is no additional sidewalk repair funding, but we are looking at doing forty-five thousand in the next two fiscal years. Public Works Director Ryan Armstrong has estimated we need ninety thousand dollars yet to bring all the sidewalks up to where we want them. We spent about ninety thousand dollars this current fiscal year to do that. We've added a number of cortijons at varying locations and for various events. We have a DNR grant application, actually, two of them, one for funnel and one for G Park. The total project is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, our local match is over a hundred. If we don't get the grants, then the city council has the option to allocate that hundred thousand dollars towards one or both of those park projects, basically do what we can with less money. We are also taking in a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, two hundred, in marijuana tax money, that's money that our two provisioning shops are submitting to the state of Michigan, and then we get a portion of that back. The bottom line is that the cost of living increase of four point five percent, and that is based on the Detroit Consumer Price Index. The cemetery trust is our perpetual care, that's a portion of the sale for cemetery plots that is put into a fund, we can only draw a certain percent of that every year. We don't have a target fund balance because that's not necessarily an annual operating type of budget. But what we do is when we have to do some major projects, one is a new entry sign for twenty-two thousand dollars, and the roof on the Sexton office, we just completed repaving all of the roads in the cemetery this fiscal year, again with money from the cemetery trust. Major streets, primarily Alice, Benson, Lake, MERS and Warner Street, the difference between revenues and expenses is a net increase of over a hundred and four thousand dollars. We'll be adding that to the current fund balance and building that up so that at the end of next fiscal year, we'll have four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars available for future road projects. This coming fiscal year, we're looking at transferring thirty thousand dollars to the local street fund, help out that fund, we're looking at purchasing two speed radar signs, they're basically the ones that'll flash the speed, well, they'll tell you what the speed limit is, and they'll flash what your speed is, in hopes of getting a little more compliance out on the roads. And as I mentioned, building reserves for future street projects. Local streets are all of those that weren't listed above, we're looking at a net decrease of forty-five thousand dollars in next year's fiscal year, we have a healthy fund balance and will be left with over eleven thousand dollars above our target fund balance. And basically, we're looking at thirty percent of the annual operating expenditures as our target fund balance. That just gives us some rainy day funds for emergencies, and a little cushion should revenues not come in where we anticipated. The salvage inspection is anybody who has a vehicle that is totaled and wants to get it back on the road has to go through an inspection, we have a certified officer on staff, so there's, I mean, it's not a huge fund, obviously only twenty-seven hundred in revenues, eleven hundred in expenses, and you have a comfortable fund balance. The marijuana fund are for our two retail facilities, the revenues are basically the annual local permit fee, they're not associated with the tax. We'll have a slight net increase and will be about twenty-four thousand dollars above the target. This money is restricted, we can only spend it on administration and enforcement of, or monitoring, the two marijuana facilities, a lot of the expenses are dedicated towards our police department doing routine inspections of the facilities. The brownfield is basically Tannery Bay, nine hundred and twenty thousand in revenues, nine forty-five in expenses, there will be a decrease, but we will still be four thousand dollars above the target fund balance. The highlights in the brownfield is rough, just under a million dollars in due care reimbursement, that goes to Eastbrook Homes, basically that's everything above what was required of the prior owner of Genesco, so Genesco is supposed to make it environmentally safe to a certain level, Eastbrook Homes is taking it above that level, we're using the captured tax money out on that site to reimburse for those costs. And I think right now, we're at about a million nine left in total obligations that Eastbrook Homes could claim against that due care reimbursement. The Tifa is basically the downtown, then we kind of meander south down MERS Avenue and taken all of the Palmet facilities, revenues of a million four, expenses of a million seven, we will decrease by three hundred thousand dollars, but we will still be well above the target fund balance by three hundred and sixty-three thousand, if I'm reading those correct, I do see council member Zima, when you do get further away, it's a little harder to read. Highlights in the Tifa, DNR grant application, again, we're looking at, we've submitted three to the state of Michigan, this is for seventy-eight thousand dollars in Goodrich Park, we don't get it, we can use our thirty-seven thousand dollar local match for improvements to Goodrich Park. Project Clear Sky is an industrial investment in which we're looking at multimillion dollar project and up to two hundred jobs created, we're assisting in that, along with the state of Michigan. Tannery Bay public access, we have acquired a piece of property just north of Bush Creek that is currently, well, it's adjacent to Tannery Bay, the property owner, well, the company, Eastbrook Homes donated thirty thousand dollars to the city to develop that as a very environmentally friendly, low-key developed public access, we're looking at another thirty thousand dollars from Tifa, so we have sixty thousand dollars to put in some walkways, some picnic tables, probably a fishing deck if we can get that for sixty thousand. We're also looking at the downtown parking lots, which you probably, most of you have seen, are currently gravel, that is a seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar, nine hundred, seven hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred dollar. The pass-through is any money that Tifa does not use, we give that back to the other taxing jurisdictions, that's typically been between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars per year. We're also looking at a property acquisition, that's one oh four Thompson Street, or more commonly known as Big Johns, we're looking at purchasing more banners and downtown holiday decorations, total of thirty-four thousand dollars, and Tifa is looking to start building up their reserves to do some major work on Benson Avenue. The inspection fund is property and rentals, we contract with Muskegon Charter Township to do that service, revenues are slightly above expenditures, and we're still well above our target fund balance at seventy thousand dollars. The LDFA is the city industrial park down on the southwest corner of the city, revenues of three hundred and eighty, two thirty-nine in expenses, we'll have a net increase of a hundred and forty-one, well above our target fund balance because we are looking at building a reserve for street resurfacing in the industrial park. Our capital projects, streets, sewer and water, we're projecting one point three million in revenues, a like amount in expenditures, a slight decrease in the fund balance, but we don't have a target fund balance, that's not an operating budget, it's more of a capital, so if it's there, we spend it, we don't pay administration or lights, utilities out of that project. The big one right now is Warner Street, a lot of that will carry over into next fiscal year. The Playhouse, this is their operating budget, they have revenues of just over four hundred thousand dollars, of that, a hundred and ten thousand dollars come from sponsorships and donations, what we've proposed to the city council is that the one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar marijuana tax, half of that goes to the Playhouse for operating, and the other half will go to the police department for their capital needs, squad cars, bulletproof vests, body cameras, those type of expenditures. And then about fifty-seven thousand dollars in grants that Beth and Cindy Beth apply for on a rotating basis. It does show a net increase of twenty-six thousand dollars, but we also have eighty-three thousand dollars in depreciation to account for, we do have a decent unrestricted fund balance, however, we go to the debt, this is the money that the city collected, most of it, for the renovations and expansion of the Playhouse, we are doing quite well as far as collections, but we have had some donors that have decided not to live up to their commitments, so we want to hang on to that reserve because obviously we want to pay off our debt and make sure that there's no default on the Playhouse debt. The sewer, million eight in revenues, a million four in expenditures, that does increase our fund balance by over four hundred thousand dollars, but we do have significant future capital improvements, so even though it looks like we're building up a large nest egg, it's going to go pretty quick. And just to point out, sixty-two percent of our expenses are for transmission and treatment, that's the Resource Recovery Plant way out on Apple Avenue, that's where all of our sewage goes for treatment, it's a long way away. Water, a million two in revenues, a million three in expenses, we're looking at a decrease, but we do have unrestricted funds to cover that, future capital improvements of a million dollars, and we're still looking at probably a million dollars in lead service line replacements, that's a state mandate, kind of as a result of the water crisis over in the city of Flint a few years back. And there's Warner Street, we still have some carryover in the next fiscal year in the lead service line replacements. The Marina will look at having a net increase of about thirty-three hundred dollars next fiscal year, that will put us well above the target fund balance, we do have a lot of capital improvements that probably need to be addressed down there, we've applied for grants unsuccessfully the last couple of years, so we're probably getting to the point where we just have to bite the bullet and fix them ourselves, primarily, it's the West Pier that sunk a few years ago, it is stable, we've had structural engineers take a look at it, but there is a significant dip in it, and it's going to be very expensive to fix, that's why we've been trying to get some outside money to help with that. The motor pool is primarily the vehicles and equipment for the public works department, plows, lawn mowers, weed whips, everything down to, you know, a couple of hundred items, a couple of hundred dollar items, net decrease of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, but we do have a sizable fund balance there, this will get eaten up quite a bit when you start buying those big dump trucks with the plows, those go for almost two hundred thousand dollars when you're fully outfitted. For next year, we're looking at doing some parking lot and driveway improvements out at the public works department, a heater for the garage, we're paying off the loader debt, sewer camera, that's basically what it sounds like, we drop the camera in the sewer lines, and you can actually see any roots or any pipe damage so that we can better maintain those, and a loader snowbox, which is just a big box on the front of our loader that helps us clear snow in the parking lots. Now the fun part, infrastructure, basically we're talking streets, we have an asset management plan that ranked all of the streets, and that's what we've been working off of, basically building the worst street, I know everybody here, the street in front of your house is probably worse, but we do have a ranking system, and we also look at the water and sewer infrastructure underneath when we look at prioritizing. We have got Lake Street, a million four, Benson Road is about a million seven with street and water main replacement, North Livingston, about a million one for water and street, South Livingston, another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, Muskegon Avenue, nine hundred and sixty thousand for street reconstruction and some minor water main replacement work, the lift station, sewer lift station down on Lake Street is really at the end of its useful life, that's going to be a million three to replace, we also have the force main from that lift station up to the county lift station, force main lift station in front of Crosslands, that's just under a million dollars, and Spring Street water main is half a million dollars to replace that. So what we discussed with the city council last week, we've got just over nine million dollars of near-term infrastructure improvement, so do we go slow and steady or quick and indebted? If we did it slow and steady, we could probably do in twenty twenty-six, doing the every other year cycle that we've been doing, we can do Lake Street, Benson Road, and the Lake Street sewer lift station, that's four and a half million dollars, take the year off, build up some cash, and then we can do the North and South Livingston, and the Lake Street force main, that will be about three point two million dollars. And then in twenty thirty, we can finish off that list with Muskegon Avenue and the Spring Street water main, so that's kind of the, if we continue the way we have done. If we go indebted, borrow nine point three million dollars, well, actually it'd be ten million, but the projects we could probably do in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, and I'll hit some red and green a little bit. Five, seven and a I went with the ten million over twenty years, just for discussion purposes with the city council, the interest rate, now of course, this was a month ago, so that's subject to change, hopefully down since we're the ones borrowing, but we used a four point five three percent, we'll end up with eight hundred thousand dollars in annual debt service, the total interest cost on that is going to add six point one million dollars to that ten million dollar project. And what I did on this slide, probably not too exciting or sexy, is just to break down all of those projects, what funds the revenues would come from to pay for those projects, and then this just kind of breaks down that eight hundred and eight thousand dollars, we would be paying what share of that, and I'll stop, I won't go to the big drumroll yet. Basically, the bottom line is that the city can afford to borrow the ten million dollars, I don't think that that would jeopardize our financial status or jeopardize, well, it's going to make some tight decisions making in the future if we do borrow it, but we can borrow the ten million dollars. If we go slow, we stay within our financial means, there's less disruption, I mean, you're talking a huge amount of the city torn up for two years versus over the course of six, you get better future financial because as things happen, you don't have ten million dollars tied up in debt, obviously, the residential complaints are going to continue. We had a group of fourth graders in city hall today, they're doing city hall, they're doing police, they're doing the Playhouse, you know, they get to go see Roger in the squad car, where's Roger at, somewhere in here? You know, the kids get to see the handcuffs and the guns and the squad cars, and, you know, when they come over, I got, I got slide shows, you know, they're always excited. Well, one of the kids actually, I mean, a smart group of kids, actually said, so when will you be done with all of the roads, and I said, never, because you're looking at a twenty to thirty-year lifecycle on a road, so as soon as we get done with that last road, we're starting all over again. If you do it quickly, you complete projects in a three-year period, you, we can afford borrowing, you will add six million dollars in interest costs, so the investment individuals, the firms and the banks are going to make a lot of money on us. It will shut down Lake Street if we're doing the lift station, the road and the force main, that's going to be pretty much impassable for a year. It's going to constrain the financial ability of the street millage, right now, we've raised a lot of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a majority of that's going to go to debt, so now you don't have that money to do other streets. It's going to require significant utility rate increases, and you're going to have limited contractors, in the Muskegon County, probably the Grand Rapids area, there's very few companies that have the ability to do ten million dollars in a two-year period, so, you know, supply and demand, if you've got less contractors, you know, they might not have their pencils as sharp as we would like them to be, and I think that's, well, I think they got one more. So, staff is recommending that we go slow and steady, and this is where normally the audience would grumble, but we don't think that it's worth six million dollars and a major disruption to finish three years earlier, we would be asking council to support this, we're going to continue to have these conversations, and just ask that the residents and the audience the twenty years of that debt retirement. So that's all I've got, Your Honor.
All right. I have one question.
Yes.
Before we get too much further into it. I have quite a few comments and questions that pertained to the budget, I don't know whether you want to hear them now, or if you want to wait until the, you know, until the resolution comes up, or
Well, it's the mayor's meeting, but I think this would be the public hearing where we hear from the public, and then your comments would be down on the resolution twenty-four, twenty.
Okay, thank you. So this, this is the opportunity for the public to make comments, if you'd like to make a comment, step up into the microphone and give your name, limit yourself to three
I might go three minutes and twenty seconds, but is that okay? But, hello Mayor and fellow council, my name is, can you hear me back there? My name is Eli, I live at nine oh six South Coast Circle in Whitehall, I'd like to take a few minutes and hopefully place a few seed starters for you before you decide on the millage rate levies tonight. However, first I have a small complaint about how the messaging for the recent fire authority tax millage was brought to us, there were two meetings to inform the residents of the community, however, they were scheduled the day after the city council meeting, Fire Chief McCarthy met with the residents on April twenty-fourth, and the city council meeting was on the twenty-third, and the next city council meeting was the day of the vote, so residents did not have a chance to come and ask questions to the council. Once we understood that millage was a standalone millage, I thought Fire Chief What I didn't know is how easy we spend it. what I didn't know is how easy we spend it. Just look at what you're proposing here on page 39. Your revenues are shy of your expenses. Everything that Manager Scott said is a total of $310,000 shy of what your expenses are. In what realm is that acceptable? Please stop spending our money without care. You need to be servants of our money. You cannot continue to just come to the residents with your hat in hand and keep asking us for more. Why do we need all these pocket parks and amphitheater, et cetera? If you had responsibility for budgeting for a fire department or giving our schools the money they needed as the last minute request, you could have paid for them rather than just keep asking us for more money. Never in my career that I have an open checkbook in my business. Every project, decision, or investment needed to be explained, had to be explained, and had to find a way to fund it within the budget I had. I just couldn't go and get another millage increase. So please, tonight, when it comes to passing the new levies, I truly hope some of you are rave enough not to vote in favor but make the motion to look for ways to reduce the spending. Thank you.
Surprised that all these people are here. There's not a lot of people starting to come up. David Hostika. I've been kind of a nuisance about Colville Park in the last, for the last few meetings.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Is that better? Does this thing, is this turned on or does it work?
You got to talk right into it.
You got to talk right into it. Is that better? Anyway, I've been here, or a few, several meetings passed and kind of been a little bit of a nuisance about the maintenance of Colville Park. And I've been citing the master plan, which is published on the behalf of the city Whitehall, and how it explains, and I can read, you know, these are the same papers that I brought last meeting, and how Colville Park in the master plan, quote, "Colville Park is located at the very north end of Whitehall and features a paved parking lot with ADA compliant access to the water and fishing pier. The park provides small watercraft, canoes, kayaks, et cetera, with access to the White River and is primarily used for fishing." Several picking tables are also located, blah, blah, blah. And it mentions that the access to the trail is also there. That's fine, great, except you're not doing it. There's no access to the water. Take a look at the White River, the bank, the bank of the White River. It's completely inaccessible. Completely inaccessible. And I know you guys don't need to respond to anybody that's during the public comment part of it or whatever, but I didn't see anything in the budget talking about bringing the master plan up to actual, you know, the level of maintenance and actually the verbiage that's published in your master plan. With respect, I heard a couple of comments about some parks getting money. Nothing about Colville. How do I get anybody's attention? Or is it, or am I out of line bringing it to your? Either that or adjust the master plan to reflect the fact that you're not going to make access to the river along the riverbank in Colville Park. I felt also that it was necessary for me to come tonight because the meeting last time I was here and I explained all this and I had passouts, I had, everybody got a copy of exactly the same thing I have in my hand tonight. Oddly, my comments were deleted from the video, the catchmark video, which I thought was odd. And they said something about technical difficulties. Like, oh, specifically the three minutes of my conversation with public.
I had your three minutes, thank you.
That was the only thing that got deleted. Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm going to ask a rhetorical question.
Can I ask, can the volume be turned up? We cannot hear you guys up there.
We just need to raise, we just need to raise this microphone so I can speak directly.
Thank you so much.
Hold on.
Yeah, there you go.
Best, there we go. How about that? What a difference. I'm going to ask a rhetorical question. Somebody can say yes or no here. When you took your oath of office for the city council for the city of Whitehall, Michigan, part of the United States of America, you swore to defend, uphold, and support the Constitution of the United States. How many of you actually read that? That's a lot of feedback. I doubt that there's very many. There are pocket versions of the Constitution that you can get by calling your congressman's office and he will give you one. I used to carry a copy of the Constitution to every public meeting. But I will remind you of one section in there. It's called the First Amendment. I'll just speak up, since we don't have anybody technically qualified here to take care of that. The First Amendment says that free speech shall not be impaired by the government. Government has no business messing with the free speech of people. Now, to say that there was a technical difficulty with catchmark, but it only happened to Mr. Hostika and myself, reminds me of a term I heard in the South. They're just going to ignore it. Closed public hearing. We move on to special presentation. Lost half my group here. No, I'm here. You want to? Oh, okay, sorry. Step out for a second. And I will give these to, you want to give those to Scott? Oops, sorry. Scott, I keep them below. Ah, okay, I apologize for stepping out there and missing my cue. But my name is Norm Kittleson, and I am the past president and current treasurer of the White Lake Community Library. And I'm here with Ray Viner tonight, who is also a board member, and the director of Virginia Demarmome is back here. And we are here to give you the annual report about how the library is doing. So we thank you for the opportunity to represent the community here tonight. And the financial health of the library is quite good. We got a clean audit again this year. And the total revenues exceeded expenses in 2023, and we ended the year in black, which is great. The capital projects uncovered, security cameras and new carpets this year. We have some entrance tower updates and new meeting room furniture slated for this year in terms of our capital projects. The energy efficiency upgrades that we instituted earned us $1,800 in rebates this year. So we're pretty happy about that. We got a really positive response to the community survey that we put out, a pretty extensive community survey, and got some great feedback from the community about that. I think the community overall had a very positive view of the library and had some and had some constructive comments about our services and how we can improve. One of the programs that I found out about at the last meeting, which I'm personally really excited about, is a retired educator and someone who spent a lot of time working on literacy issues, is Books for Babies grant. And it's a pilot program to promote early literacy habits. And it's really going great. People with young kids can come in and they get a bag full of reading materials and resources that help them improve the literacy of their young ones. And I just think that that's a fantastic program. We got some new youth programs, new staff, lots of stuff going on for kids. We had the ribbon cutting for the trail recently. And that's, we got some new gaming equipment coming in with some VR headsets for teens. Don't change any questions. Any comments? I think you're doing a fantastic job. You have an awesome library there, staff, right? Wonderful people that care about this community. Great asset to this community. Thank you for your support and efforts on behalf of the library. And thank you. We appreciate your support.
Yes, please. I just want to say how, how I, oh, sorry. Is this better?
Little better.
A little bit?
The closer the better.
From everybody else as well.
You need a teacher voice.
I've lost that teacher voice. I have a chronic sinus condition, so if I speak too much, I lose my voice. Not a bad thing. But anyway, just, I just want to thank you for just a fabulous library. I remember I was a kid and I went to the city library over in, what we, we call this the garden room now still, in the garden room, with lovely library directors who always let me take more quietly than was supposed to. lovely, this is the new library and the community support for that. But I follow the library on Facebook and I'm just amazed at all of the cool programs. I took my grandson to a tech take apart where they just brought in all kinds of old laptops and different things. And then there was somebody knowledgeable there and kind of helping the kids take things apart. You know, they had goggles on and it was just, it was really cool. So I'm just, I'm, I'm very proud of the library and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. The other comments, questions? What else? Thank you very much for that recording. You're welcome. Could you give a minute? Yes. I didn't realize. All right, next up is the consent agenda.
We move for approval of a consent agenda for May 21st, 2024.
Second. A move in second, is there any discussion?
I, just one question of a point of clarification, just to make sure. I heard some rumblings that the budget work session was not posted or notified appropriately. I just want to make sure that, put that to rest or, I'm sorry, I asked about the rumble. Was the work session, the May 21st work session?
Wasn't posted?
Wasn't notified, posted at the right time. I think it was, it was on the, on our website a week before.
We moved the meeting, we got moved from a Monday to Tuesday and that was posted.
Is there anybody else hear that, anybody else?
I don't think it affected it too.
I was going to ask that too because I also heard. So did we notify the public properly on that?
It was on the website 18 hours before the meeting, so.
It was in compliance with state law.
So the consent agenda, motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor say yes. Yes. Of course, say no. No. Consent agenda is approved. Next up is message from Mayor, Council, and City Manager.
Okay. Well, I, number one on my list to talk about was the same thing that Mr. Hostika and Row, Row spoke about. Because I watched the YouTube video and noticed that their discussions were cut off. And I was looking for an answer to why.
We have Wi-Fi issues in this room and I noticed that it was cut off, not deleted. And that was her comment, is that we are having some type of connectivity issues in this room. As a matter of fact, the beginning of this, I just got a notice from Brian said that the beginning of this meeting was freezing and it's okay right now. So we'll have to address that with catchmark to get that fixed.
And I did think that their comments needed a response of some sort. I thought it was funny myself because Mr. Row was cut off at a minute and 20 seconds into his talk and Mr. Hostika was cut off at a minute and 15 seconds into his talk.
Yeah, there wasn't anything fishy, it's just we're having issues. We don't have access to those videos, so it's not, we're not doing anything. We're, it's a live stream. So correct, Courtney, wherever she is. Yes, so our technical people are here if they want us to address it.
Does, does, okay, does that fall under catchmarks?
Yes, yeah, because they're the ones videotaping and livestreaming for us. We don't, we're not doing that ourselves, we're paying them to do that.
And I'm certainly insulted to think that I accused them deliberately cutting off your comments. I wish they were there so the public could see what you said. If they're recorded, why aren't they on YouTube? Because they're cut off on YouTube, just like they were live. So again, that dog don't hunt. Somebody's doing something deliberately. There's only two guys that happened to. It was in the course of a two-hour meeting. Everything else was perfect.
Oh, and the other thing that I wanted to mention goes back to the email that Scott Hughes sent around concerning the bathroom for the pocket park. And I, excuse me here, it says, we talked about that at the last meeting. And a couple of days later, Scott sent that email around. And it said that the bathroom has been ordered and that it was going to be delivered in September. And that the cost is going to be, including $9,000 of shipping, the cost is going to be $72,000. And my assumption, I never was told otherwise, but my assumption was that this was going to be built on-site as opposed to, it sounds like it's being ordered pre-fair. And, you know, I don't have an opinion on that one way or another. But it also said that the 72 the engineer really off by 94.4%.
The original plans were to install a lube, which is something that's catching on in the U.S. It's basically a stainless steel bathroom where you can just go in and hose it down from top to bottom. The engineers had estimated 140 on that. But that actually became cost prohibitive. So we looked at some other alternatives and there was never any intention to build something on-site. We went from a lube that would have been basically dropped in place to a, Rome Tech is the contractor that will build it off-site. It'll be brought in and dropped on-site. months versus under. Because we always budget what their numbers are. And if it's under, then that's so much the better. And trying to find money after the fact.
It said that it's going to be at the pocket park It said that it's going to be at the pocket park plaza. Where, where is this going to be located? My assumption, I never heard that phrase before, the pocket park plaza. Is this going to be not in the alley, where's it going to be located?
Still in the same place. Between catch mark and bells.
So it'll be inside the pocket park?
It'll be on the north side.
Okay, up by the wall of, okay. All right.
Gone by there and looked at that site?
Yes, please.
I want to say thank you to everybody too for coming tonight. It is really great to see so many people here. My guess is that maybe you're not happy, but please come up and talk in public comment and let us know your thoughts. It's great to see you here, thank you. You said it before I said, it's, I forgot to speak in. Can everybody hear me or shall I read you?
Speak up again, sorry. I'm glad to see people here. I think what I have always said to people, I was on council for twelve years prior to this current term. And local government is your first phase of law here. And I think, oh, I also, Scott, I wanted to mention, I would like to see Rose on a work session for us at some point. I, I think it would be, I'm still trying to get an idea of the priority of all of our roads and how they are, their condition and what's our, our future plan for going forward. I think that would be helpful, so thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, the only thing I'm wondering about is this, this access park down there is north of Henry Bay project. And assuming we pass a budget that includes that for this year, correct?
Or next this year.
Yeah.
After July. Correct.
And so when would we have some kind of a, do we have to have an engineering study done? Or are we, are we going to have some kind of a, something to look at? We, I'd like, I just, no one will be able to see something about that. And I'm pretty interested in that.
We actually have a preliminary design from the conservation district. I don't think we're going to involve an engineer. I don't think it's something that needs the additional expense. So I can get that copy out as to the preliminary design. We're probably going to downscale it a little bit to be within that sixty thousand dollar budget. And then as future years go along, we can add more if we find, we got more fishermen or more picnic needs. But at least start by providing the access.
I guess that's all, thank you.
Scott?
I don't have anything right now, I'll reserve my time for resolution to the budget.
One thing, if anybody has been down and saw a fishing platform down there, it's completed. I think we, we got hand rail?
Yes.
And although that is beautiful. I went down there, walked it the other day. Really nice. That's all.
I want to let people know that there will be fireworks on the Fourth of July this year. The Boylait fireworks committee on which I serve has pretty much got all the funds they need to pay for the fireworks. There's still some need, there's, there's donation cans throughout both communities. If you see them, please help us pay for this year's and we're trying to build a little bit for next year's fireworks. If the community wants to have those. Also coming up this weekend is the Feet in the Street. It's a community gathering behind Fetch in the Mears Plaza. Two to seven, a lot of great family activity going on. With that, we will move on to our next public comment section. Public comment.
My name's Maggie Maxey, I'm new to Whitehall and I just wanted to say something positive. I moved here and I think it's great that we have art council and that we have a theater. And my grandchild really enjoyed the splash pad. So keep up the good work, there's a lot of good that's being done. And I'm, I'm also very supportive of the temporary closure on North Mears every Monday evening. I think that would be great. We had a huge crowd last night at the theater to hear Tommy. And I think people, all age groups, from the very old to the very young, enjoy hearing his music. And I think that would be a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Patrick Nolte. I'm a resident of Whitehall and recently took over ownership of Mile and Restaurant. And just three quick points, I'll hash out real quickly. First, I want to express my support for the road closure that was just mentioned at the end of Mears. Located at the very end of that street. I hope that that goes into consideration with, with the resolution. It is proposed for Mondays, we're typically closed on Mondays, so it really doesn't concern us as a business at all. And if we are open for any reason, it's, I think, an opportunity for us to feed the people that are there enjoying the music in kind of a new and creative way. So that's a little bit that I wanted to weigh in on there. I did want to present a form for applying for the social district permit in that area. Being a new owner with a new business entity, we have to go through the process again with the state to submit the approval from the local government and then give that to the state MLCC board for approval to grant us to use the social district space. So I have a form that I believe I need to present to the clerk for a resolution to be held for approval from the city council by an approval majority vote for us to be able to pass it on to the state government. And the last thing, I just, I want to leave you guys with a, something to chew on. We are really hard to see as you drive by Colby, there's not a lot of visibility to, the building back there. If you don't know it's there, nothing will tell you that there's a restaurant at the back of that, that promenade. So I've got some ideas, but I'd like to hear some of your ideas. I'd like to come back, this is my first city council meeting and I'm quickly getting a broader perspective of what it takes to be involved in local government, so appreciate what you guys do. Yeah, I'd just like to kind of brainstorm what are ways we can increase visibility to the social district back there? To the fact that there's a restaurant? Are there signs, postings, anything that we can do to just draw, draw some eyes back there a little bit better? That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, Ken? One more comment, please. Just as we make, we vote for the budgets, Mayor Seaborn, you do a great job in cleaning that splash pad. I see you out there morning discovering all kinds of stuff, but that's what we pay you for. But I think when we do these budgets, let's make sure we plan for, that they can be sustained for perpetuity, that they can sustain themselves later on because hopefully, I mean, you can do that for many more years, but there's going to be a time where you can't clean it for us, so in the DPW, we can put that on our budget that it can be cleaned in the, in the, in the future. Also, we talked about people not coming to meetings long and stuff, it's hard to, you do your best job by putting on social media, but not everybody's on social media. Maybe if you allocate a few dollars, putting a sign in front of City Hall, just like Monmouth has out there, that informs the people. Everybody drive by Colby Street, let's invest twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars, whatever it costs. We're going to do that at St. James Catholic Church here soon, but we can do the same thing over here, letting people know, here's when the meeting is, here's what we're going to be talking about, things that we talked about. I think it's a good way, because not everybody's on social media, this way it informs everybody what's going on in the city. Thank you.
That's a really good idea.
Hi, I'm Laura Abramson, I'm a resident of Whitehall. And I just wanted to say a few words about the new business, the Fetch Ring road closure request. Full disclosure, the owners of Fetch are my sister and brother-in-law. But I come here as a fan of live music. And since moving back to this area three years ago, the Monday nights in the summertime have been by far my favorite event. I have seen it grow organically over the last three years, to the point where people are bringing lawn chairs, people plan on bringing lawn chairs, people get there early. Of course, most people here probably are familiar with the fan club led by Tommy Foster. He's an institution in this community. And I am just really happy that we're considering this because it does get very crowded there. I know they've done a really good job of keeping people on the sidewalk. And what I've noticed is, like Maggie said, it's an all ages event. And to me, it's, I like it better than Feet on the Street, I like it better than all of those other ones because you're seeing a lot of the same people every week and it's a really nice community event where you see familiar faces every, every week. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is David Ostaka. I sit here and I appreciate all you guys, you know, letting publics comment and what, and whatnot. I mean, I sit here and talk, listen to Mr. Scott Hubris over here about, you know, the fact that they're putting sixty thousand dollars into a new park and he mentions how important it is to have access for fishing. And the fishing platform at the, at the Goodrich Park, which I believe was just rebuilt. The best fishing in the area is on the river. And without any access to the Whitehall site, that forces everybody to come on to try to, and trespass on my side. And I just, I think it's extremely inappropriate and rude and inconsiderate and a bunch of other adjectives that I can't think of off the top of my head, that, that the city of Whitehall takes the position that it does on that little piece of land there. That wouldn't be that big a deal to clean that up. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we will move on. Believe we have the old business and we move to new business. First up is Funnel Field fundraising request.
Yeah, Mayor, having discussed this at a staff meeting a Monday or two ago. Staff has some serious concerns about a motocross event in Funnel Field. What kind of damage that's going to do to the park, how that's going to interfere with any reservations, any non-reservations, just people moving in there. The car show seems not nearly as intrusive. We've been staging, maybe you don't want to go there, but we've been staging crews in there for years without any issues. But I think once you get a number of motorcycles moving in and out, it sounds like they're professionals, they know what they're doing, but I don't believe staff supports us as not being a proper venue for any type of motocross displays, maybe displays, but not for any motocross racing. But it's still council's decision.
Anyone on council want to give an opinion on this? Do you want a motion or something? If we are, if we are going to pass this, we need a motion in a second. Without a motion, it dies.
I'll make a motion, just to see where it goes.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second and now we'll put it up for discussion.
I have a question. Would they have to be a, what is it, five oh one C?
C three.
C three?
Or something, something like that, there's other Cs that you can be.
Would they have to be that to be, so they were, they were liable and not the city being liable? Or is, what would the liability, how would the liability be?
They're, they're, and we'll add in or correct me if I'm wrong, they, they don't necessarily have to be a five oh one C three to be liable. There would have to be some sort of legal entity that the city could reach in case of any liability issue. They do talk about insurance, so I think initially we would go to their insurance company. And then if need be, we would follow up with, with the company itself, whatever assets they may have. Obviously, the liability and the safety is paramount, but we're also concerned with what kind of damage it's going to do to that park. I think, I think it was in the state of Michigan, there was a recent incident with a drag race, sanctioned drag race where a vehicle lost control and killed one of the spectators.
And the fatality up on the building last weekend.
So I guess, and I don't know if we'll say anything else, as far as liabilities around, I think as long as there's a legal entity, whether it's a five oh one C three or an LLC or some other corporation, that's
But this sounds like a personal one, so I mean, that, that could be with the professional group that's doing the motocross. Could be liable for that, but if it's something unrelated to that part of it, it'd be back against the individuals that are putting it on. If insurance doesn't cover it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would work with the park, with the, where they would be running or anything, but you know, I wonder if they might reach to, you know, the racetrack to see if there's a place to, plus the, over by Michigan Adventure.
Underver.
Underver, if there is a place over there that might be more appropriate for us. But also, Scott, if you could just chat with them to see if there's something different that they could do. Certainly I'd like to help people who are looking for this, looking for help with their fundraise.
Scott?
I agree with the idea of a fundraiser for this cause, but I have the same concerns as the administration that when I read this, I thought, there's no way we can have a dirt bike race at Funnel Field. It just doesn't make any sense to me. But I think, you know, a car show, like you said, is a great idea, you know? People seem to like those. But I, I can't understand that they're noisy and they tend to tear things up, that's what everybody do. So, you know, I don't, I'm against it because of that, as long as it's on there.
I would like to see what other options they have and we go back and see what, see if they can do something with all the dirt bike show. And there's really, you know, they didn't really put in there any way of how the, how the money was going to be raised. I mean, whether they'd be selling tickets or how they'd operate, do that, it's vague and that. I mean, yeah, I'm for the car show, but not keen on the, on the other side.
I'm saying, I'm all for the car show, but yeah, I just, I don't see how everybody, surely, or whatever it's going to work in the park. Maybe you're, I don't know, revise something from them. If they're interested in just a one car show, I don't know if that's going to help them raise any money or not. I'm looking at where we're
Any further discussion?
I, I was just wondering if the motion and the support was to approve the car show, but not the BMX, the motocross.
Motion was to approve of it.
Yeah. I, I don't know if you would like
So we would have to amend.
If you amend the motion or
He can amend it with this, a people from the supporter. Yeah.
I just had a little thought. We would have to pay attention to any scheduled soccer games, football games, baseball games, things like that? Things to me that might have an issue that way. Care to amend your motion or we can go down the road on this?
Well, I'm pretty sure if we go down it the way it is, it's a no for sure, so. We'll make a motion to amend it to just a car show if the family is still acceptable to that. We can, we can maybe second that. Would you want to second that part or not?
We'll second it. But when, like you said, if there's competing events, you know, I don't know how much of the area it's going to take.
I don't want to see it lessen up softball games or soccer games or anything like that. I don't.
I think it's probably going to be good if they came back with a graphic, what part of the park they need to use and check the schedules on anything else that's already been viewed.
What is the 17th of August?
What, we would probably run into Little League and softball is normally done by the middle of August. What you're going to start running into is soccer practices. We don't really have any type of a schedule. It's always been, you know, the coaches kind of drew an agreement amongst themselves. It's Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00, I'm going to be just outside of the softball field. And one group might take the area next to the parking lot. So it's kind of more of a, you know, show up and if it's available, use it. But we would.
Football practices going on yet?
Uh, yeah, definitely. Yep, they'll probably be up there practicing as well. If you approve the car show only, it would obviously be subject to coordinating with available space and other events. Just like what we do with any park rental.
The more I think about it, the more, I wonder if they would also require, if they're going to try and collect money through ticket sales or something, would they require fencing to be put up or things like that? Would there be any requirement for police services or anything? I think they need to come back with some more specific.
I agree with him. I think rather than voting on something, we need to have a conversation with staff.
I think it's pretty vague. I mean.
So would you care to withdraw your motion?
Sure. I will withdraw the motion.
Draw the second?
We should see where the motion's gone. I can't withdraw.
So we're, I think we're in agreement that we'd like to have a little more information concerning this.
We'll reach out to them.
Okay. Next up is Fetch Drewing Road Closure Request. We'll make a motion to approve Fetch's request for road closure on Monday's. Seven, yeah, 6:30 to 10:30 Memorial Day. Seeing Memorial Days are. They've moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I'm not in favor of it. Council, I don't know if we officially voted on anything last fall, but, or if it was just, you know, if it was an official vote or what it was. But we decided we weren't going to close that road for things last fall. And I don't see any sense in changing our minds on it now. I don't have anything against Fetch and I don't have anything against the program they're trying to run there. I think that it would be better served, instead of closing the road, closing half of the park off that there, on their half of the park and letting whatever needs to go on, the lawn network. We didn't spend almost a million dollars to create a meeting place to close off access to it, in my opinion. So, I'm not for it.
Any other comments?
I think one of the hesitation, I'm not sure if there was a problem or not, was the safety. I know when we have, we closed off First Street, R Street.
First Street.
The fire department was requiring those giant dollar things because they were concerned about the safety of the people. So that's my only concern. I'm all for gathering. I'm all for the space. I mean, last night they had the rain day over at the Playhouse. It was packed. It was exciting. You know, everybody was enjoying themselves. It's, it's a great idea. I'm just not sure how to do it safely, especially when we're going to have to move things in and out. So I would like to have input from, from the safety, the safety folks. And Scott, maybe you have that information. I'm not sure. But I would like to know kind of how to do it safely before I would feel really supported. I'd like Scott's suggestion. Is there a way to, a way to move it to the back? I don't know, but for the, to close down the street that people are, I mean, there's a light right there. The light turns green and people turn, you can see people. I get that. But feels, it feels scary to me from a safety perspective. That's all. That's my only concern.
If I can respond to that, what we would envision, being that it's temporary for a couple of hours every evening, is nothing more than a big orange and white road closed signs that can be pulled in and pulled out at both ends.
How do they manage the, if the Kobe, Poki Poki has their alley sales a couple of times a year? How do they close that off again? Does that happen to do that with just the orange cars?
It's the same thing that we're going to do to Warner Street, I'm sure. They won't be approved last council meeting. Shut that section of Warner Street down. From somebody that's been in the public safety role since, I don't know, second or third. But it was a long act. I trust our, between our police chief and our fire chief, that they will full-heartedly put their best foot forward and make sure that if they sink, areas where people together. I trust them.
I, I think it, myself, I think it's probably a little safer to close the street because it's a very popular venue. I, you know, I, I try to get there every Monday if possible just because everybody, and the weather's out there and you can see blue skies until 10 o'clock sometimes in the summer. So it's a nice, it's nice then. I, I have been there at times where I have crossed and, you know, like the streets, you know, and the street is open and I kind of feel like it would be safer to have that road closed. And that way, you know, it's clear, you know, because, because it is busy, you know? And people are coming from one side to the other and, you know, they're probably jaywalking. You know, they're not, you know, walking all the way down to the end and around. So it just, it is a very popular event, so I think probably closing it for me would make it feel a little safer.
I just wonder that road that's to the west, the west end of the parking lot or north. If they're stronger, however you look at it, it seems like egress only. Correct? You can only leave the parking lot. You can't go into the parking lot there. Down there by the center of the building, that's ingress. It's an ingress. So the only way out during the time would be.
The other thing we can look at too is this, it would be fluid. If something changed or something did, we came up with a better idea or we didn't like it, we can always, we can always present it. It became a public safety hazard or something like that, we could make that, you know, that would be an option.
Yeah, I agree. I think I've just been trying it for a few weeks and see how it works. But not guaranteed at all, something.
I think I'd like that more than sidewalk forever ever.
Well, yeah.
So, the way I look at it, Steve, is we just, I would say just approve it for the time and then if something happens where we decided that it's not working, we can just send the guy first who's trying to, who's in my perspective.
I'd like also to consider another area as we, as we go on, yeah.
That's not a bad idea either.
All right, here's no further discussion. A show of hands, those who support it. This is not, yes?
I don't know.
I'm asking for a show of hands. Show your hand. You support it.
I thought it was a roll call.
It's not a roll call because it's not one. If I believe we had four people that supported. Motion is approved. Next is Resolution 2418. Of course, hills matters.
I will move the, I'll move the resolution, but I would like my permission to go there.
I'll second.
Moving second?
Cleveland buddy that's interested in buying a special property?
We have, through the years, they have developers and real estate agents and individuals come to the city. We currently have a developer. He did a lot of the houses, I'm going to blank recently, right off of Peterson Road and Alice. Spruce.
Spruce Court.
Yes, yes. Spruce something. So he has shown some interest, but a lot of times when they've come in and looked at the property and walked it, they've kind of said, wow, that's going to be quite a challenge because the road is basically the whole spot of the property. So, my recommendation is that we hire a prime engineer to do some preliminary engineering to see exactly how the road can be built, how stormwater can be managed. So that when, if this person continues to pursue it, that we can actually say it is buildable for anybody in the future. It would be, I think I've mentioned 20 lots. There's really 18 that are buildable. If you notice on the map on the back, there's two that have been split off and given to some adjacent property. But if we get 18 of those lots built for, you know, homes that are $200,000 and up, that's three and a half million dollars. I think the $5,800 investment on our part would probably be well spent.
So who would build the road?
The road would be the responsibility of the property owner. Unless the city council decide, well, the developer, not the individual property owners. That's what we did in Tanrey Bay with the water and sewer. They built the water and sewer, dedicated it to the city after we inspected it. So we, in a sense, own the water and sewer lines in Tanrey Bay. This is, they would have to build the road to our specifications. And once we let them, then we would accept the road for all future maintenance.
And you would determine the size of the lots?
No, but it's already a plat it's up to them. So this is what we have unless they get a circuit court action.
Yeah, to amend a plat is, there's a couple of different ways to do it, but yeah, basically it's complicated.
This, over here is Warner Street coming in off of Warner.
No, that's living stem. Warner Street is on the right side. No. That's catch on the other side.
Now, my other question, was this over here Peach or is it going into Peach?
No.
Comes up before Peach.
Yeah.
Here's Fair Lawn.
Yeah.
It comes down and connects to Bentstone.
So what's, what's it not going to live here?
There's more slots here.
It lives on the corner of Peach and Peach.
So it's going on Elvis Street.
Yeah, Elvis Street.
Peach and Bentstone.
So it's coming out on the Bentstone and even between him and Peach.
He would be between this road and Peach. The road would come along the side here, the west side of his property.
He owns the two, he owns the one and the one and the two.
You got, you got one lot and you got Peach coming out of Bentstone House.
And one consideration that a couple of developers have brought up is whether or not they could cul-de-sac it, the road at this end. Because putting this road in is, it really serves nobody except a few backyards. So that'd be pretty expensive for some backyards. If that were the case, the city could abandon, vacate that road and it would be split between the adjacent property owners. But at least this gets us to start putting sense to the papers.
I've got a question. I wondered if we might be able to discuss the concept of affordable living at homes in the city of Whitehall that don't have a lot of area or new homes. And I am concerned about affordable living. I know the apartments are going to be market rate. And I know that, you know, I don't want to be pricing out young people trying to look for a home. I would even like to at least talk about, like, a tiny village somewhere, you know, where people who just want, maybe they're people who are retired or people who just want to have a small house. And so I'd like to at least, you know, I don't mind moving this along, but I would like to have a, I'd like to have a discussion about affordable housing in the city. Do we have developers and do we make a requirement that a certain percentage of their homes are affordable? I'm very concerned about the cost of, of homes, you know, not just in Whitehall, but everywhere. It's a challenge right now.
That's what I was going to kind of thinking to myself. I wonder if this property, if it'd be possible to put more small lots in there to provide a little more smaller, more affordable homes? Or would the water situation cause that to not be economically feasible anywhere?
I think that would be difficult because you would be making extremely narrow lots. We do, zoning ordinance now allows for at least 800 square feet for living spaces. So you can't have a lot of smaller homes. But I think splitting these lots up and there's a process as far as splitting lots. But I think the only way to make it with road frontage is you're going to have, and I think a lot of these are 60 feet wide, now you're going to have 30-foot wide lots.
Would it be possible to put, if you see the difference in the width of Fair Lawn versus the street that's drawn there, could you make a big loop with a smaller street? Is that feasible?
Well, your, a developer would have to spend a lot more money on asphalt. And even if you got smaller lots, smaller homes, it's probably going to make it a little less attractive.
And it still has some required code for being a little fire apparatus and everything else.
Right.
We do need to start talking about this though, to the extent that we have the possibility, the potential to change things up a little bit. So I, again, I guess I would throw, the concept will reverse us session to start talking about it.
The question, where, where does the water go now that comes down that and goes through the culvert underneath Peach and goes between Diamonds and Balloons there? And where does that water go? Because there can be quite a lot of water coming down through that woods, off of that hill. That hill's all clay, so it then sinks in.
Right now goes the path of least resistance.
I mean, just goes into the ground back there, so it must turn to sand or something. Because I didn't know that. When I see the water going under the road, I'm thinking, there's got to be a drain back there in the middle of that field or something.
There's a culvert that goes under Warner Street. Yeah, but, yeah, it goes on to the school project.
Oh.
I've never seen it flow through. I mean, it's not like a river.
When you had large rains, it flowed through there, but most of the time, there's nothing there.
I know there is a culvert there.
Yep.
So it must be that it turns from clay to sand back in there.
I think there's.
There's a lot of water coming through there.
Yeah, I think it really hasn't happened in recent years. But with the normal snowfall, with the spring runoff, that's, I think, where we most often see the water running through that lot or that part of the site.
All right, if there's no further discussion, if you have a motion in the second, we'll call please.
Abala?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Signka?
Yes.
Philibrand? Has Zimer?
Yes.
Holzrohm?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2419. Next is Resolution twenty-four nineteen, Street, twenty-four Street Project.
I'll make a motion on Resolution twenty-four twenty, no, twenty-four nineteen, Street Project, twenty-four Street Project.
I'll second. In second, is there any discussion?
Some of this is adding, I mean, we, we were gonna do if we had the money, the rest of the money.
Correct.
And actually we have a few other roads that are well traveled, but they're falling apart. We're jumping in when we can.
Correct.
Yeah, the wall is cheap.
Yes, it is.
All, all the equipment is here from the company and everything.
If there's no other discussion, roll call please.
Brown?
Yes.
Holstrom?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Philibrand?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Signka?
Yes.
Soltar?
Yes.
Resolution. Pass. Next is Resolution twenty-four twenty, annual budget and mileage review.
I'll put, uh, Resolution twenty-four twenty on the table. Second.
In second, discussion.
As I said earlier, I have a lot of comments and some questions. I don't know, I guess I'll just, uh, start reading my list and if somebody wants to stop me, they can, otherwise you can wait till I get to the end and come back. But, uh, I'm just gonna make my comments in the order that they appeared and the opening statements and the budget that we got. Uh, first one is, I don't understand why we use the consumer's price index with, out of Detroit when we don't live in Detroit, but on the other side of the state in a rural area, basically. I think, uh, anything that is related to Detroit is going to be higher numbers, but it's just an observation of mine. Uh, next item, I have, uh, no problem with the city clerk, Peggy, blaming her six to me. She does an exceptional job and she's had a lot of added responsibilities put on her job. Uh, I do not agree with the playhouse manager's pay moving to a grade eight. In my eyes, that job's not even a full-time job. That's just my comment. Uh, I don't, I, I guess I wanted to discuss, but we didn't get the chance to because it flew by too quick. And I mean, uh, I don't understand why our police department has almost doubled the budget of other communities of our size. Uh, you know, why do we have a detective? Why do we have eight full-time employees compared to six? Uh, you know, what, what are we getting for the extra six or seven hundred thousand dollars that we're spending towards our police department compared to what like communities and sizes are spending on their police departments? Uh, I disagree with, uh, giving the marijuana tax to the two areas that are suggested. I think the police department's budget is high enough to begin with. We don't need to be giving them another fifty-nine thousand dollars. And I definitely don't agree with giving fifty-nine thousand dollars extra to the playhouse. A hundred and eighteen thousand dollars would have been real nice to finish fixing all the sidewalks in the city. At our last work session where we, we discussed Tifa, uh, it was just as suggested to wait and address the topic at the budget meeting and we didn't discuss anything at the budget meeting above it. So to me, it's still a work session item, but I don't, I don't agree with that. Uh, as far as the general fund goes, under city council, taxpayers paying for up to three members to attend a conference on Hackinah Island is definitely wasteful spending in my eyes. Uh, I don't think the taxpayers of the city would appreciate three people sitting up here on Hackinah Island on their dime. There's other M L, M L, M, M L meetings to go to that are a lot closer and a lot cheaper. And as far as the roads plan goes, that was in the budget up there at the end, um, for slow and steady. That's all I have.
And what else?
I'm, um, in agreement with, I don't want the marijuana money going to the playhouse and the police. I think they want to go to local streets. Um, and I, and I, same thing. Brenda does a great job. Brenda worked hard on the favor of her getting the pay bump. But I don't see the playhouse manager's job being on the same level. So I would not recommend that paper.
Um, I have a question. If we fail to pass this budget, we still have June. Is that right? We could, we could iron out some differences and pass it in June or, I mean, is this a safe thing where we get down to the last, you know, day and either pass it or?
No, the, the charter requires you, I believe, to adopt, uh, I think tonight you have to adopt the budget. Um, or do you have the charter?
Yeah, that's valid.
Charter, not, not state law? I thought it was a state law that had to be in, you know.
Will's got our charter, so.
But what happens if we didn't pass it? Say there's still no law.
I, I'm looking, I'm not sure. While Will's looking for the charter.
I'm seeing if I got the charter.
Yes, um, as far as the marijuana tax goes, um, the police department is, is the one that inspects those facilities. Um, so if anything, they are deserving a little proportion of that fund for, for doing that. That is much cash that you believe, Roger, that you have to do that? Inspect the marijuana facility?
I, I.
As far as inspection of the marijuana facilities that's required, you have to do that or not?
There's no state requirement. We'll do it.
Okay.
Like we do it.
Don't forget it's a.
Sorry. Um, as far as the other half goes, um, there are multiple places we have that on.
How many more benches you go to get?
That's where I'm working towards.
The area.
Um, you know, I, if anything, I'd like to see that last half split between parks or act and, and if we gotta give anything to the, to the theater, split that last half in half. So it'll be a half quarter, quarter. Um, again, that's an opinion from my perspective.
If we wanted to do something, would we amend the budget at this time?
I don't think we got an option in the morning.
I was reading, hardly an option.
Both budget or not appropriate budget?
The, the charter requires that not later than the first Monday in June, the council shall adopt the budget for the next fiscal year. So you've got, uh, between now and Monday? No, you still have another meeting. No, you don't.
No.
You have Memorial Day. So if you don't pass it tonight, um, you would have to call a special meeting. But it has to be adopted no later than next Monday.
Can the budget be amended tonight, like if we wanted?
The, the city council, it, it's before you. Um, whatever numbers you want to change, add, delete, um, it's up to majority vote of the city council.
So someone would have to make it, uh, add amendment, motion, motion to amend and then that amendment be voted on.
That would probably be the cleanest? Yes.
Could we adopt it pending further discussion at our next work session? Just, I, I, for me, we have a lot of unanswered or kind of open-ended pieces that we brought up. I know we had initially planned to have, um, a work session with a potential overflow work session. And I, I don't feel like we, we were all exhausted at the end of our three hours last time. So I don't know that we got to talk about some of the things that Scott has brought up. And, um, I feel like we could use a little more time to discuss before we iron out specific numbers. So I guess my question is, can we approve it pending further discussion on, you know, certain items? Um, that's a good one. I mean, technically it's approved, but we have further discussion.
You can, but any further discussions that changes the numbers would require a budget amendment. I'm not a big fan of budget amendments. I like to kind of keep our feet to the fire. We do a mid-year because of, you know, better projections of revenues and actual numbers versus, um, estimates. Um, I'm not sure, I mean, Mr. Brown brought up, uh, a number of items. I said, Mr. Zimer, um, I don't see that those necessarily require an additional work session. Um, the question about the Detroit Consumer Price Index, uh, the Consumer Price Index is always based upon a large metropolitan area. I don't believe there is a CPI for West Michigan. If it is, it's a sub number of the Detroit CPI. We've been using that forever. And I know just because we've done it forever, doesn't mean we have to keep doing it. But we've always used that as a good gauge as to, um, where the employee pay raises, um, should be. Um, his comment, I think echoed by Mr. Zimer about, um, not okay with, um, moving Beth up. I can be a simple yes or no this evening. Uh, the police department, I think I've given you some information. The, the bottom line to that is why do we have the staffing and the finances we do for the police department? Because prior city councils, um, felt that those were, um, justified to have a full-time detective and a full-time school resource officer as well as the number of patrol officers. Uh, the marijuana tax is kind of a, I'm, I'm hearing a number of different ideas on that. Um, so I figure that takes a little more discussion. Um, the discussion on Tifa, I know that there's been some concern about oversight on their finances. I don't see Tifa being any different than the other fifteen budgets that you are reviewing tonight and the other fifteen funds. Um, I think Will's probably got a comment on that. Um, the M L convention is, it, it's a budget number. Council can approve that, eliminate it, or we can increase it. You know, tonight you can go any direction you want with those numbers. Um, and then I think it was a general opinions, uh, on, on regards to the roads. So, I mean, you're always, you know, it's your option to decide to have more work session. Um, I don't think there was a whole lot of discussion during the work session. And again, maybe it was, um, the time that it took. Um, but I, I didn't hear at the end of that meeting from the city council that we needed another work session because we did tentatively schedule the next night for continuation. But that doesn't mean upon further reflection in the comfort of your own home, you came up with a lot of ideas.
I think myself, I was just exhausted. We, we met for over three hours and, and we, we went through the, the presentation, but there were some, there was some of the narrative in the budget that I, I wanted to have more discussion about. And, um, and, and not a quick discussion. So I'm fortunate to be on vacation this week, so I'm available to meet again. Any others that, you know, just have a, a little more time to talk through some of the issues so that, um, you know, that we're not pressured into voting for something that we're not necessarily comfortable with.
I noticed we had a large increase for public works. And what I was wondering is where, I, uh, where the bulk of that increase is going? How much of that is going towards better maintenance of our parks?
Um, well, I guess, uh, what number are you looking at? Because there's not specifically a, a public works budget. The public works department is spread out on streets, water, sewer, parks, city hall. I mean, they're, they're allocated all over the board.
But I, I thought they did. Well, let me just ask, is there an increase in public works for better, or ma, more maintenance on the park?
The simple answer is no. But the better answer is that we increased the staff at the public works department by one in two budgets ago because there's concerns from city council about the maintenance of the parks and, and the streets. And what we did is we recommended adding a full-time position so that we had more manpower. Pardon you ladies for saying that, um, but that we had more employees available for, um, a lot of the maintenance issues.
And then didn't you have somebody retire right after that? So we didn't really do anything?
Uh, no, we still did. We, we, we still added one full-time.
Probably hired a person and then somebody else retired, so.
We did, but we hired two in short succession, Andrew and Josh.
Jason.
Jason.
So, so there's, really isn't an increase in, um, for parks maintenance? Cause we're going to be picking up another park when the Tanuary Bay access, or whatever we're calling it.
Yeah, we, we have added a full-time position in the public works department to, to complement the amount of time and maintenance done in parks as well as on the streets, water, the sewer.
Do we also not have part-time staff that's doing that? Cause I see the guy drawing on it Saturday, so.
Yep, we have, uh, I think Brian's got four part-time seasonal helpers. And what we've actually done is we've been keeping work on the weekends. A lot of that is trash pickup in the parks. So we have improved, um, for the most part, within the constraints of the budget, the maintenance in the parks.
The Switchback Park is classic case of something that looks terrible. And it has for quite a long time.
It has, and we have had volunteers. We've had the conservation district. We've had DPW staff to it. And at the direction of the city council, we're putting that on a priority to maintain that on a more regular basis.
Did, did Tifa district hire a couple of part-time staff or are they coming out of that part-time budget?
Uh, Tifa probably about four or five years ago hired a, a part-timer to work downtown. Um, and they're really, just for one position down there, there really wasn't that much work to justify. I mean, there's only so many leads and garbage cans you can empty in a day.
So where, where are we at? Well, we're not gonna, wanting to have another meeting and we're looking at, you want a little, little budget amendments right now?
If that would be the preferred route.
From staff's perspective, yes, uh, but Ms. Cabalas mentioned she doesn't want to be pressured into voting. Um, so certainly don't want council to feel that they're pressured into it. I mean, you can, I mean, some issues have been raised. That would be a discussion amongst the seven of you as to whether you agree, disagree, agree in part. Um, but I, I, you know, unless there are more specific issues, um, I think they could be addressed this evening.
So what we need is for, for someone to put forth an amended budget with whatever things they, that that person believes should be amended and, and throw that on top of this budget. All right. So if you had more things, you'd say, I have an amended budget suggestion. And then if you got a second, then that would be added to what we have if they ask.
We, we would vote on that specifically.
The four things.
Yep. Well, yeah, if somebody wanted to put all four, or if they wanted to do, do them one at a time.
These are doing one at a time.
If, if the council member wanted to, say we want forty thousand dollars for Christmas lights and there's a support, then I think the council would vote on that. And if approved, then it would be adjusted in the budget. And then later on, you can adjust the budget, um, with those amendments.
Right. Prove it as amended, incorporating the amendments.
So what we need, we, we need a motion to amend budget?
Yeah. Well, a, a motion, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pick on one of yours, um, or pick out one of yours, not pick on it. Um, if you wanted to make a motion on a different allocation to the marijuana tax, then you would present that motion. And if there's a second, then we would vote on that.
Right.
And then any other, I guess, line items that the city council wants to act on.
I would motion, I'd make a motion that we take the.
I would motion, I'd make a motion that we take the marijuana tax money and put it in the fund for local streets.
Can you expand it just a little sidewalk?
Yes.
I'll second you.
Okay, so questions on that?
Yes.
So I understood we were going to not do, the plan initially was to not do any sidewalks this year, but move it to the next. So if we took that money, we could put it to those sidewalks and you could do that, would that be doable this year? To finish all the sidewalks this year instead of spreading it out over two or three?
You could. However, I guess the motion is to put it towards streets and sidewalks.
Right.
So are we putting it towards streets, all towards sidewalks, or some?
Well, I'm just making sure of sidewalks and streets and not just.
You're taking a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and you can put ninety thousand dollars towards sidewalks. You're left with twenty thousand dollars in streets. That doesn't mean it won't, I mean, we would transfer it over to the capital improvement fund. I mean, you're not going to do a lot with twenty thousand dollars per streets, but it would still add to the pot.
That's acceptable to me.
Is there any other place we can find some money to pension for streets? I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that.
All right, we have a, we have a motion. As I understand it, the desire is to put the marijuana money on sidewalks.
And the remainder going to streets?
Is that what, is that what? Streets and sidewalks. We had that rate. Sidewalks and streets.
The streets wouldn't get that much. I'd rather put the, if we're going to do sidewalks, I'd do sidewalks and give ten thousand dollars to the White House.
No.
No.
Duh.
The only issue I have is this year, that money was going towards camera systems for the vehicles and body worn cameras, correct?
I believe so.
That is a huge mistake if you do not do that. From somebody that wears a body worn camera every day at work, that is a huge liability if you don't do it. If you could do this next year, that's fine, but to not get them cameras and car cameras for the vehicles is a huge mistake. Huge mistake. From a liability standpoint, that's only us as a city. Anybody comes out during an arrest or something happens and it's not on video nowadays? Good luck.
Did that number for cameras?
Half that number you would, went toward the portion of, towards the cameras and the entire, the entire camera system and the body worn cameras.
And that's for the cost of them, what about the new maintenance and programming, that is that included in that number? Or is that additional to be come up with somewhere else?
I didn't believe that is, they have a server system that it goes on. I mean, it just, although then it, it's a dock. If it'd be someone's weed, which dock at the station, it goes, the video goes into the computer system and is saved for X amount of time. Or if you, or if you find something that you need to save, you can save it permanently. But the camera systems, Roger, how old's the camera systems we have currently?
The one we have now is about ten years old. It's, cam, the whole camera system is different than it used to be. You can't buy it outright anymore.
So we're living on borrowed time for that. And as far as the litigious society, we have currently, that's probably a.
Have to be set for sidewalks too when somebody falls on a broken sidewalk and gets hurt.
All right, we have a motion. You want to amend it? If you want to make a motion.
What was the number for the cameras?
Well, half of the amount, half of the one eighteen was what you do. Police department, I think, for that, it's all the same.
Eighteen two on the body cameras.
And the in-car one?
This is in-car video and body cam, eighteen two.
That's one year and a five-year track back.
Five times.
But that's next year. The first year is eighteen two, and then it would be the ongoing market, which is next year.
So it would be twenty thousand for the cameras, is that the right? Does that fit for the first year?
Twenty thousand will be to buy Roger for?
You can't buy it outright.
No, it's a contract.
The first year is a year for five years, roughly. Actually, eighteen thousand for five years. Okay, all right, so it's rounded to twenty thousand. I have a motion that we take marijuana tax money, put twenty thousand towards the police cameras and the ballots into sidewalks.
That's an amended motion?
Yes, that's an amended motion.
Seven. And then on second, we have a discussion.
I would like to know the impact on the Playhouse budget, about that money.
Well, it's fifty-nine thousand dollars short. So there would have to be fifty-nine thousand dollars raised elsewhere, through grants, sponsorships, ticket sales.
So I don't like to make decisions that quickly.
There's no further discussion. Your motion is to?
Put twenty thousand dollars towards the police camera, tire and body both, I guess, for twenty thousand. And the balance to the sidewalks and I guess any remainder going into a local streets.
If we all understand that, we'll call this.
For Perry, Zeimer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sigga?
No.
Cabala?
No.
Philogram?
Yes.
Zeimer? Oh, or did you, sorry, Holmstrom? You don't get your vote, sorry.
Yes.
And Salter?
No.
We have four yeses and three noes, so it passes.
All right. Is there any other aspect? Make a motion that Playhouse managers pay not go to grade eight and stay where it's at.
Second.
And move in second. There's no further discussion. What's it currently? Anybody?
Bring a six, which you think.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, we have one. I got a six to an eight.
I just have to, I'm going to, something here, Salter has given me before for a second. So I, I have to say that I do think that that works. And it's not specifically Beth, we're talking about the position. But Playhouse manager works incredibly hard. I live right next door. I see her working many times when the rest of us are sleeping. I'm out there, you know, with my dogs late at night. Sometimes she's over there. She might be cleaning the toilets. She might be setting something up. So I think she brings great programming. It's not easy work. It's, it's, she's friend of the, everything that needs to be done there, she does. So I, I don't have a problem with the increase. I support it. I support the position. I support the work. So, you know, support the motion.
I have watched every single Playhouse director just give their lives to the Playhouse. And so I, I, and we have been so fortunate, and I think the success of the Playhouse and where we're at today has been because of those, those directors. And they've been, we've been very, very lucky. And they are probably some of the most hardworking people I know. And it's a very unique position because there is, you're managing a building, you're managing a budget, you're managing theater groups and dealing with entertainment. And it's just, I think she makes it look easy. And so maybe that's why people think it doesn't look like it's full-time. So I would have to agree with everybody that she, I think it's important for us to, for us to support the Playhouse by supporting the position.
Anyone else?
My comment would be that I don't have any, any problem with. My only issue is that I don't believe that the Playhouse manager should be at the same level as the other city officials. Not to say that I think she'll not work or anything, I just I don't think she should be at the same level.
There's no further discussion. Motion is to raise the Playhouse manager from a six to an eight.
What was the motion? I thought the motion was we don't.
Correct.
Correct.
So the motion is we don't.
So.
So if you say yes, it does not go to eight. If you say no, it does. Correct?
Correct.
We do. Let me read the motion just in case.
The motion is to not increase the Playhouse manager position to a level eight. So if you say yes, that means it will not go to a level eight. You say no, it will go to a level eight.
Just by negative motion.
It is very difficult to a negative motion, yes. But that's where we are right now.
There's a shame. And I think it's a five to an eight.
Yeah, I think it's six to a six.
I think it's a three. They didn't weigh it for. Those were probably under right there. Well, this didn't weigh it, this would weigh this.
We're on page eight.
Right at the top.
Question is, twenty-three, twenty-four amended budget, the question budget.
Are you questioning the budgeted amount? It's a guess between fringe benefits and salary, meaning how much vacation time she would use in correlation to non-vacation time. Her pay would be an eight if it's voted, or remain of a five if it doesn't pass.
So what do you mean?
In the preamble.
Scott's whole thing, statement, I think you said six to an eight.
Yeah, because I'm a six.
I think that's where I got it.
Right. Is she then going from a five to? I'm showing an increase of forty-seven point two percent of the amended twenty-four budget to the twenty-four, twenty-five.
That would be, that would be accurate.
According to, I'd love to look here, it's going from fifty-two thousand eight hundred to seventy-seven thousand seven hundred, that's nineteen thousand nine hundred.
But that also includes the merit as the core. Looking at that right there, it's five, seven percent of that number.
But forty-seven percent from one year to the next, which is, when was the last time you got a raise like that?
If you don't want her at an eight, do you want her something other than an eight? Is that what you're doing, or you want to leave her at a five?
Well, I, I could go from a five to a six, but my assumption was that it was a six because that's what it said.
I'm not sure where you see that it's.
Or maybe it doesn't say six, it just says raise to an eight. Or it didn't say.
Brown, page eighty.
Yeah, that's, that's the dollar amount, which is one we're discussing, but. My cover letter just says that we were doing eight. It doesn't say she's in a six.
Okay.
Yeah, I read it somewhere too, but what I wrote down.
So she's currently?
Right? She's currently a five.
Yes.
Okay, so is there a way that you have a different sort of turnout to the, if this one, if going from a, from current to eight is a no, means stays at five, that feels very wrong. I don't know where we would find somebody to replace current situation.
I don't have any problem, I don't have any problem with going, if it's at a five, I don't have any problem with going from a five to a six.
Me neither.
That's high, and I think current state is, is pretty low, so. Given, given what position responsibilities are.
So we do have a motion and support on the floor. But Playhouse manager said we would not go to a level eight.
Correct. It doesn't say what it would be, it just says it would be true. I don't know. Well?
Yeah, so.
But then they would have to make a motion to establish.
You can make a new one to send to whatever somebody wanted to make a motion.
Yeah.
Let me make an amendment to my motion.
Okay.
To raise the Playhouse director from page eight to page six.
Except I'll make the motion.
Yes, it was shot.
Scott made the motion. I'll make the motion to change it from a five to a six. You have your second. All right. So now we're not voting on yes or no, on whether she goes to an eight, we're voting on whether she goes from a five to a six, yes. So yes was approved.
Yes, too.
It's obsolete.
I guess the one problem, I see it really, but yes, you put it down, then she stays at a five. Unless the motion would be some other.
Okay, okay, I understand. I see it. Okay.
Brenda, ready?
I don't know. I'll see. Are we ready? Okay, here we go. Brown?
Yes.
Zeimer?
Yes.
Philogram?
Yes.
Cabala?
No.
Sigga?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes.
It passes.
Well, that passes.
He's at a level six. He's at a level six.
So, so I can make a motion that she goes from a level six to a seven?
As you can.
Okay, I have to settle.
I have a second now.
All right, then you can second it. It takes the six to a seven. Motion on the second. We have discussion.
I would like to know the difference in the, uh, the amount from six to seven.
Looks like roughly five.
Rough.
It was, it was roughly five thousand from a five to a six.
Okay.
Now, it would roughly be another five thousand.
So the numbers, yes, the numbers I got here is eighty-one, seven, one, four.
Close to level?
Eighty-one thousand eight seventy-four for a seven, seventy-four thousand oh ninety-eight for a six.
Seventy-four, eighty-one.
Sixty-nine thousand, I'm running that eight.
That's more than it says on the, uh.
You're, you're looking at a number, did I use it for, I use it, I created it with a formula, because I have to guess what a person would use for benefits during the year. So, some of their salary is mixed in with fringe benefit wages. It's a guess. Yes, it's all in that. Between those, between the three, I, I can go get my papers.
Is it eighty-one to me? I don't, I guess I don't know, because eighty-one thousand is more than.
The fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, eighty-five thousand for this grade seven, and seventy-seven for thirty-two for the six.
That's all, everything?
That is just wages, that does not include. Pension and any.
That's higher than I, than I'm reading here, so I, I withdraw my motion.
You're looking at just the wages, with part of the wages being in the fringe wages.
Given that, I withdraw my, I, I just was looking at.
My numbers are good, I promise.
The motion's ready. I would like to make a motion to withdraw the forty-six hundred dollars from three thousand dollars to go to Mackinac Island to a conference.
Are you making it so it's zero, or are you?
It's zero. Nobody goes.
Would you see that in lieu of something else?
There are, there's one right above it in the budget that the mayor and the city manager go to, that's seven thousand dollars. How much money are we gonna spend sending people to M L, M M L conferences and meetings? You know, I mean, it's, compared to what you get out of it. I think the taxpayers appreciate somebody taking a three-day vacation when they're dying.
Have you been to one?
No.
I have, and it's not, it's not a vacation.
Yes, it's not a big vacation.
It's not a vacation. You learn about Robert's rules, and there's all kinds of different subjects.
You saw the way you want, I'll call it what I want.
Yeah, somebody that has been to a book, that's not, I, I just. I'm not happy with the Mackinac Island thing, I went once numerous years ago, um, it was one of my first conferences, I learned a lot. Um, they have first-time council member meetings, there's, there's all kinds of meetings, essentially you go from the menu to what you're gonna go to. Stuff for planning commissions, stuff for different things, it's, it's actually very well. One of the things that I would like to see, at least part of that money, and quite honestly, I learned a lot more, was the old mayor exchange base. Which you are part of, okay, all right, yeah, good. To go to another city and see what they do, and how they operate, there are, you guys, don't go overboard with what you have to do.
I, I have to say that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say that it, um, the one at Mackinac was my first conference I went to as well, and it's where I first heard about the redevelopment ready communities program that we, um, brought back from that meeting and pursued it, and just basically got that certification. So I, I do find value in it, I think, um, it's, it's, I think they have them in attractive places, because it is a little bit painful to have the endurance to sit through a lot of the meetings, it's, it's intense. Um, if you make the most of it, I mean, yeah, you could go goof off, you could.
Good.
There's no lie, you could. But, um, if you are diligent and, and go there with the, with the intent to learn, it's incredibly valuable. Um, I, I might support, maybe not three, and also if you've gone, you know, maybe not every year, if you've gone in the past year or two, maybe you're not eligible to go. Um, maybe that's the way we could manage it, but I definitely don't, I, I definitely support at least one person, um, attending the conference, wherever it is, because it's not always in Mackinac, it moves around.
How many classes do you take for like a, a, a visit?
Is there like breakout sessions? It depends, some are home or on.
It's a full day, it's a full day.
I think it's more than a full day, too.
But, but you're, you're in a full day, I think the reason they, they, by kind of looking at the study, I think the reason they do it, rather than just having it in Lansing where they have their offices, is to get people to go. You know, I mean, and, and, you know, most of them are people who, you know, are, are public servants, you know, I mean, we're, we're not, this is not our full-time job, and we take time out of our, our, our lives. Now, I don't think I've ever been part of a council that has, you know, kind of written on the taxpayer dime and, and not benefited from one of these workshops. And they're, they're a full day. You, you meet other people who are doing things, you listen from experts on current information and trends. I, I always brought things back that were really valuable, and, and I was always exhausted when I came home, you know? Wherever, wherever they had these things, I don't think I moved to Mackinac.
I went to one class in December, January, and I, it was an excellent class. I, I think very highly of the, you know, I think they do a great job as far as the economics of going to Mackinac. I don't really think, you know, it doesn't pan neutral on it, I can certainly support at least one person going.
So what is the motion, what is the motion for?
The motion is to withdraw anyone from going to Mackinac for the M M L conference.
They have a second?
No.
There's no second, that's a school.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to allow one person to go, as long as the person did not go in the previous year.
I'll second that.
You can second it, we have discussion. Just saying, do you need that? Anyone wanna commit to that?
Everyone's a region, the top.
And then if nobody, I mean, nobody is interested, then the money goes back in the fund. Yeah, that's, that's good.
September eleventh, you deserve it. So the motion is to allow one person who can, hasn't gone to Mackinac in a year?
Hasn't gone to that conference, in the last year, you know, in the previous year.
Is that the, that's the, they, that was the annual conference, right?
Right.
So, annual conference, that's.
Doesn't matter where it's at.
Right.
You ready? Okay. Brown?
Yes.
Philogram?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Sigunga?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes.
He compromised it, actually.
Passes. The one person goes to Mackinac who has not gone.
Probably the first one, since I've gone, probably. Anything else?
I'm done.
Anyone else have any amendments that they wanna make to the budget?
I, I have, this is a small one, it's more about principle than it is about the amount of money. It's only, I think, maybe six hundred dollars. But, uh, it is taxpayer money, uh, so we as council people get a little stipend for being here. Um, it's not a salary, it's not going to support families, but, um, and as the mayor has some additional responsibilities, they, that, that position gets an additional amount of money. And the idea, as far as I understand it, is to be able to do things that support us as council people and such. Um, so I am not in favor of aligning, I am going to dues and memberships that are not a requirement of the position. I'm specifically referring in this situation to Rotary membership. I don't think we as a city should be paying for any council members' memberships to a position or to a, to a group that's not a requirement of holding the position. That's why we have the additional, um, the little stipend that we get. So, I would make a motion to remove any support for Rotary and other memberships for council members, reserve that for city staff, who, that is a benefit of their employment with the city.
Second. You move in second, is there any discussion?
Do we know how City of Montague does it?
They have no members.
Pardon?
They have no members.
Oh.
Representing the city.
Oh.
So it's zero.
The motion is to?
To remove any membership dues for, um, specifically this example, Rotary, for anyone on council, um, for something that's not a requirement of their position, and only reserve that for staff. Correct, that is correct, I bet.
Stand with all please.
Sure. Oh, please. We trigger everyone down. There we go, all around. Here we go, Philogram?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sigunga?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes.
It passes.
Anything else?
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the amended budget?
That's next.
I will, so move.
I will second.
Yes, um, so we didn't have a discussion about the road plan. Did we do that fast and furious, or?
Um, not at this point. Um, we might have that as future discussions, but at least for this fiscal year, um, we're looking to finish up Warner Street and build up the reserves so that probably the summer of twenty-twenty-five, spanning the budget we're possibly going to adopt in a few minutes, as well as the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
So current situation with amendments, is this all the same path?
Correct.
For now?
For now. For tonight.
Yeah, but other than, I still think we need to talk about carefully. It's, it's a different subject, it's not really, a, a budget I can, think, with me. It's just the way it differs along. I think it's discussed, but others don't, so they probably won't have.
So do we have a mo- motion to accept the amended budget?
Mm-hmm.
Motion in the second?
And did, I had Brown before, it's the original one, do you?
I second.
You, Holmstrom, okay, thank you.
You vote up, please.
Sigunga?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Philogram?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Brown?
Since I got a little win, I mean, well, yes, she won.
It passes.
All right, next is Resolution twenty-four, twenty-one, utility rates. Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four, twenty-one, utility rates.
Sorry.
And you can second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to have just an explanation for the rationale, why, I know we always have increased rates from the, um, where we send our wastewater, but I, I wanna make sure that before we pass it along to people who need to use water, who need to use their sewer system, that, that, you know, that we can't handle that increase ourselves.
Um, the simple answer is no, with the amount of capital improvements that are required in water and sewer over the next few years, um, the wastewater rates went up four and a half percent for the current year. We're increasing our sewer rates two and a half, so we are covering, basically, we're covering almost, well, more than half of that, without any real increase to our own budget. The water, we're looking at a million dollars to replace, um, all the lead water or even suspected lead water lines, um, so that's really kind of the bare minimum. Um, if, if you absorb the rate increase, you're, basically, staff's recommendation is to look at anywhere from a two to a five percent increase annually. Um, there have been communities that have said nothing, and then five years later, they're increasing rates twenty, thirty, forty percent. Um, I think Cedar Springs years ago went fifty percent, and there were seven new faces and a new city manager at the next election. Um, so we're trying to keep pace with inflation and our expenses, but not exorbitantly. So, yeah, the two and a half and the five, um, you know, elicit those, the projections as far as revenues, to make sure that they're in line with the expenditures that, at least for those two, that Brian's putting forth, either, um, as operational, maintenance, or even state mandated. I mean, the, the lead and water copper lines is gonna be billions of dollars statewide, and that's an unfunded mandate. Not that it's not a bad idea, um.
Well, we have to do it.
Yeah.
Yet we don't want to run water, I, I'm just, I just, you know, I know there are a lot of people who are in survival mode, and they have to have water to cook with, drink, to shower with, and it's a basic need, and I just, um, I don't know, every, anytime I see a water, drinking water increase, it just, it, it just makes me wonder about people, you know, who, you know, everything's going up, but, you know, things that are essential that you can't do without, that, that's a kind of obvious thing.
Is it not true that we still have either the cheapest or fairly close to the cheapest water and sewer rates in the town?
Yeah, sewer and water rates, I think that, um, either us or Food Court are the cheapest, we've always been down at the bottom. And one note, when I look at comparing it's the total cost. Um, there are some communities, some just over there, that have a commodity charge, a readiness-to-serve charge, and a debt charge. So, some communities will just take one part of that and compare it with our flow. So that, that is a total cost that we compare with other communities. Gets more complicated when communities do it by cubic feet. There, there's a math equation, but it makes it a little complicated. But, yes, you're correct, we're, uh, the cheapest, if not one or two of the cheapest, I shouldn't say the cheapest.
Least expensive.
Least expensive.
The biggest thing that's only got me about sewer and water is, you know, you're getting, your sewage really is charged by your water.
Well, that, that's.
Yeah, unless you have an extra meter.
Well, but sewage meters aren't very accurate, uh, water meters are, because there's just flow. Um, so they're extremely accurate. Sewage meters aren't because there's more than just flow, and that throws off the calibration.
I mean, you know, my, my water pool soaks eleven thousand gallons of water and eleven thousand gallons of sewer.
Correct. Yep, that's based on. Correct, yep, that's based on the water usage.
And, you know, and especially in summertime, the amount of flower beds that we have and water in the grass and everything else, I.
We, we do offer, if you want to pay for an additional sprinkler meter, we will add that and you will not have sewage charge.
Yeah, I understand that, but by the time you recover the cost of the cost of the meter, and then, uh, turn off and shut off fees, turn on and shut off fees, or the ready-to-serve fee that carries when you're not even using any water, it doesn't pay. You, you'd have to have it for ten to fifteen here before I'm gonna show you any real savings as far as, I'll be dead before you.
So, just to put it out there, if this goes through my, my water rate of three hours.
But you're one person.
Yep, that's why I said, putting it out there, on me, three hours.
Or some people have, you know, people in their households. And I do encourage people to shower.
Well, I get it, I do not mean to.
This is, this is what happens when you have.
I have, I have something I'd like to throw out there. Thinking, um, I agree with Mr. Hasteka on the shoreline in X.
We've got a motion.
Please, sorry. We have, we have a motion for the utility rates. Motion in a second.
Yep.
Let's have a little call, please.
All right, Brown?
Yes.
Sigunga?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Philibrand?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Salters?
Yes.
All right, next up is public comment. This is, this is where the students get to come forward and introduce themselves, so maybe.
I'll go first, sorry, I'll keep it certain, I'm sorry, um, Jen Hayne, Betts Brewing, thank you so much for the opportunity to try this out, I really appreciate it, I just wanted to address some things that have been brought up, safety is our number one concern as well, if it's not safe, we don't want to do it. So if that proves to be an issue, we'll go back to the, to the drawing board, that's just not who we are. Um, additionally, the mention about moving it maybe to the top of, um, the sledding hill area, the reason I did not propose that is because it is a business that we run, the fan club is, we do pay them, um, and we pay them what musicians should be paid, it does not come cheaply. Um, and we can afford to pay them due to the revenue that we generate from nights like the fan club. If they are offsite, if they're not adjacent to our building, we will lose, uh, probably way over half of that revenue. And will no longer have the ability to afford to pay the fan club. Um, additionally, there has been a lot of comment about how visible it is, and just like Mr. Nolte mentioned, back by Mylins, there's some signage and invisibility factors, I know a lot of people have stopped to enjoy the fan club just because they didn't know it was there, they were from out of town, but they saw it, so, um, yeah, so just things to think about, we do need to still be able to afford to pay them through the revenue that we take in, um, due to the proximity. Additionally, if safety isn't concerned, and we are still generating the same amount of revenue, you're just encouraging people to walk back and forth with their social district hubs through an active parking lot. And I don't feel like that's a safe alternative, so, stuff just to consider, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, here's my two cents on the Funnel Field, I was spoken earlier, but I had no idea, because all of a sudden this fundraising request. I personally tell you I'm the closest person to Funnel Field that lives in this town. I know that me and some of my neighbors were really sad to hear that, um, the car show is no longer gonna be at Funnel Field. So I absolutely love the idea of somebody else is coming in with a car show, I one hundred percent support it, um, I don't know about the other idea, but just as a neighbor, I would love to see a car show, it is one of the best things about where I live, it makes up for the one percent of parents during soccer that speed down our street, or the amount of trash that comes into our yard. Speaking of which, can we please get trash cans at Funnel Field Park and more than one park bench, that would be much appreciated, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna shock even myself here, because I'm very fiscally conservative. I mean, I agree with what you just did, but I think it's a worthwhile investment to spend five hundred dollars a day on room, board, transportation, and training per person to send them to this convention. And the reason I say that is I think that it would make the whole council run a lot more smoothly, not that it's terrible now, but I think it would be to the benefit of the council and the town. So, maybe in the future, you've got till August, I think, isn't that when it is? September, so you've got even more time, maybe you want to amend that, just a thought. Sorry, Scott.
No problem, Jerry.
Anyone else? Students, in the students' lot?
My name's Corbin Sanchez, I go to Montague, and my teacher's Joe Brunson.
My name's Michael Jones, I go to Montague, and my teacher's also Joe Brunson.
Anyone else in the room have anything they want to say?
My name is Laurel Sanchez, um, just sitting in this long meeting as a, as a city person or whatever, these chairs are horrendous. Maybe do something a little better, thank you.
Anyone up here?
I, I started saying a minute ago, I, I agree with Mr. Hasteka and what he said about the shoreline, and here's what I'm just throwing up. I don't mind, myself, I don't know what kind of thing he's got in mind, if he's just talking clear brush, or a boardwalk, or whatever, if it's just a matter of clearing brush, I'll go down with my chainsaw and cut it down if the city would have pulled away.
No, you can't do that, um.
Liability, we see.
Not, not necessarily liability, um, but that would probably be a few violations of legal, environment, Great Lakes, energy, environment, Great Lakes and energy. Our Public Works Director Brian Armstrong is working with the Conservation District on doing the clearing.
That might have helped answer his question.
I, I believe Mr. Armstrong has mentioned that to Mr. Hasteka more than once.
And then, when, whether it was last year, the year before, when they cut the brush
Yes.
along the swamp, and left it there, was that left because that's a requirement? Or whatever, because it's not ready and then the hikers people bring the fish.
Yeah, that, I'm not sure, I'll check with Brian on that, um.
Majority of that was removed, and basically what they couldn't get to offshore, they left, and what's there actually helps fish. It holds, it holds fish.
Helps fish.
Conservation District does that, they'll go and put trees in the water.
Right, they add it, you know, so, maybe, you're right, maybe that's the way. Outside, and, and I understand it too, like, water here and Canada, or whatever, and if that's the reason, then it should be explained to people. So that they know, because otherwise it's just, it's, it's a move, it doesn't mean.
Yes.
Can I have the last word?
Speak up.
Can I have the last word? I, I just, this is just a personal note, I would like to welcome Mr. Nolte as a business owner to the City of Lloyd Hall.
Thank you.
And hope that his business does well, I'm just glad to see the younger generation, Mr. Nolte graduated preschool with my son, so that's kind of, kind of an interesting little note, so I'm gonna have to get over there, right?
Yes, you do.
Okay, we'll do.
All right. We're adjourned.